Level, let's call the meeting of the Board Supervisors to order and have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we still have Flavia doing, we need a motion to have her in for this meeting also? Make a motion for allowing Flavia to fully participate in the meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances.
I say no move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Flavia, you on board?
Thank you guys. I'm on board. I can hear nothing clear.
Roll call, let the record show that Bob, Doug, Carol, and Ed are here and Flavia is remote. Approval of final agenda, anybody have any changes to the agenda? Lori or Chelsea?
No. No move.
Move, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Public comment? We have anybody?
Yep. Looks like an agenda and a non-agenda. They're both non-agenda. All right. First up, Marty Mantenfeld regarding parks and rec spending. Just remind you, you get three minutes.
I won't be three minutes.
I won't start until after you announce yourself. Just announce your name for the record.
Marty Mantenfeld, Brino Drive, Pelican Preserve. So now that I'm paying for parks and recreation, you sure do know how to spend a lot of money. But things that I see that are missing on there, they talk about building pickleball courts, they talk about building an amphitheater. This is what I don't see. I don't see things for the kids, okay? I don't see a skate park that you're thinking of, a BMX park. Are you running swimming lessons for the kids during the summer? What I do see is parks and rec closes the fields when the kids are out of school. How ridiculous is that? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks for the parks and recreation committees to consider.
Marty, you'll be pleased to know that we have a swim lesson person onboard and they're going to be starting very soon. Ask and you shall receive. Look at that, customer service.
All right, then we have Rod Senior, also non-agenda, a mystery non-agenda item. Three minutes.
Good afternoon, Rod Senior, Gateway Greens. Just going back a few weeks to the budget time, I remember clearly we were struggling to get below double figures and we thought that nine percent was acceptable. I never thought it was. Big chunk of the nine percent is parks and rec, and I'm glad you're focusing on it. And what I want to talk about is cost benefit. What is the metric benchmark here for each of these facilities that we're talking about? Carol, you asked a great question a minute ago. Do we need a dog park? Sounds simple, but it's a good question. Hundred and eighteen people out of six thousand is two percent. Like, is two percent the figure that justifies having, building, and continuing to maintain a dog park and the parking and everything else? What is the number that, as a rule of thumb, that this board would accept as a reasonable percentage? I say that two percent is far too low. Then let's look at the pool. We've got 200 passes that were issued roughly in the last 12 months. On 6,000 people, that's three percent of our community are using the pool. And at $330,000 loss, based upon your numbers, you'd have to charge $1,650 per pass to break even. So is three percent an acceptable number to justify continuing this pool? I say it's too low. Soccer. Well, with soccer, we've got 800 kids, 60% of them don't live in Gateway, 40% do, that's 300 kids living Gateway. 300 homes out of 6,000 is five percent. Is five percent worth having, keeping our soccer facility alive?
You'd have to multiply that by two, though. Two seasons per year.
No. Two seasons, the seasonal cost is $175 for GSA, that's $350 a year. Eight hundred kids, GSA's gross revenue is 800 times 350, which is $280,000. So we are losing $225,000. GSA is making roughly that. I don't deny them the profit, but not on the backs of the Gateway taxpayer. Options, we can either shut the soccer complex down, or we can scale it back to 2002 level of two fields for the Gateway kids only, or we can take the whole thing in-house, which is not a bad idea if we take into account the people costs of doing so, or we set up a joint venture where everything, all the cards are transparent, face up, we all sharing the costs and the revenues with the users, rather than us being transparent and them being opaque.
Five seconds.
Okay, Doug, one last point. You mentioned you didn't like the idea of a fence. I remind you of the dog park, we couldn't, the fun park, I'm sorry. We couldn't even manage the fun park. So heaven knows what it would be like at Gateway Commons if we didn't have any, if it wasn't fenced in. I just can't see how we can do without one. Thank you.
I have no more public comment.
Go to ones.
Nope.
Okay. Local achievements and recognitions. None. Advisory Committee items and reports. We have the PPAC member appointment, Ed Hodges.
Ed Hodges, he was, he's previously, he is currently on PPAK as their vice chair. His two-year term is coming up. He has requested to remain, applied and requested to remain on PPAK. And at their meeting last month, PPAK did vote to recommend to keep him on.
Retain him.
To retain him, yes.
So we need a motion to approve him.
I say no move.
And he's here.
Motion made by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Carol. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. Approval of minutes, we have the minutes of the August 14th PPAK meeting and October 2nd workshop meeting minutes.
Move to approve agenda items eight A and B.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda item, resolution 2026, 2025 budget amendment. I read that, and is, basically all this is, is cleaning up town lakes and Stony Brook.
And Pelican.
And Pelican.
And Pelican.
Pelicans is, they're, that $900,000 was for the paying off the bond, it was just a big move.
So how, how does that impact that, that we just got handed at the last meeting? Does it basically replace this whole thing?
No, this is 25.
This is to clean up, to close out.
Oh, okay. I thought that's for 25.
No, it's for 25.
25, 25.
We can't have negative funds, and so that's why the funds have to transfer between reserves and into operating, et cetera.
To zero out.
To zero out, so.
They can have a surplus, but they can't have a deficit.
Move to approve agenda item 9A.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 And that's approving resolution 202605?
Yes.
Okay. And then we need to sign that after the meeting?
Yep.
Moving right along. District engineer, is Steven on?
Nope, not this meeting, next meeting.
Administrative agenda items.
Nothing.
None? District manager items.
The only thing that I have, well, two things. Winterfest is the first Saturday in December, December 6th. I believe it's from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. You'll, we started to put Facebook ads out, we're seeking sponsorships and donations for that.
Is that our tree lighting? Is that historically what we called it?
Yeah, that's your tree lighting. Put it on your calendars, please. We'd love to have you. We do have some volunteer opportunities if you'd like to help either with raffle tickets or with welcoming folks or, you know, showing where different games or arts and craft tables and things like that. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing.
Where are we going to do that this year?
It's always here.
It's always here. Soccer complex.
Okay.
We'll have food trucks, all that fun, games, Grinch, Santa.
Food trucks like usual.
Yep.
Santa.
Yep. And the Grinch. So Carrie is working on all of the logistics of that, but it's always the first Saturday in December, so mark your calendars. I can even send out a meeting invite if you'd like. Tuesday is a holiday for us, it's Veterans Day. Just so you know, our offices will be closed. I'm actually flying out tonight, but as always, if you guys need me, you can always call my personal cell phone, I'll be checking emails, and I'll fly back on Tuesday.
If the government's closed, why do we have a holiday?
Fair, fair point. We'll observe it, therefore, on their behalf.
You're flying out of here?
Yeah. I know, good luck, right?
Good luck.
Thanks.
The question, how are you getting back?
I might not come back. No, I'm just kidding. But again, if you need anything, you guys know that you can call me or email me. I'm just going to North Carolina, we have a couple weddings that we're attending, so, not mine, but others. That's all I've got.
I love how you said not yours.
Yeah.
What did Flavia say?
She likes how I said not mine.
Okay. Zach, you got anything on behalf of Tony?
On behalf of Tony, I thank you for letting me hang out with you this afternoon, and I have no substantive updates for you unless you had questions.
We're, have Tony send you one more often if these are how long our meetings are.
Yeah, this is, I'm pleasantly surprised, happy to be here.
I think this is the shortest agenda I've seen in the five years I've been here, so.
Let's not derail it.
Okay.
I do.
Future board business. What'd you say, Flavia?
I'll wait.
Agenda management, again, the next couple meetings are going to be extremely light, just with holidays and then agenda items, but I do need to bring the furniture for the admin building. We've been going back and forth with two vendors. I need to bring that to you before the end of the calendar year because the rates go up, but other than that, it's a very, a very light agenda over the next two months, really. We've got bids that are out on the street or going out on the street, so a lot of these will, will come to you after the first of the year.
So if we, if we did decide to cancel December 18th as well as January 1st, what does that do to this management calendar?
Nothing.
Is there any, I mean, like your furniture, can we move that up?
Yeah.
Make sure it gets done in December, first meeting in December?
My goal is to bring it to you at your next meeting, but yes, if you canceled that, that's fine.
One of the areas that I think we're most interested in is the boardroom design, the layout. I mean, for me, the tech structure, are we, how close are we to, because you're talking about furniture, are you just talking about furniture vendor or?
Furniture vendor.
You need walls on the roof first.
Yeah.
But we know what the dimensions of the room are, I'm just curious about layout.
This is desks, chairs, tables, that's it. And you guys budgeted for all the furniture two years ago, so that money is already accounted for. We had $100,000 for it.
Okay, then I will move to cancel the December 18th meeting.
We're weak on, weak on budget or agenda items. We can always call it back if we have to, correct?
I mean, it's been.
If we don't need it, we don't need it.
Yeah.
Second Carol's motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 And we already canceled January 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
So that means that there'll be a month there.
Yep. That's fine.
Okay. And, but you can work with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We've intentionally tried to keep it quiet towards that part of the year in anticipation of that potentially happening.
Travels.
Vacation and holidays and all that.
So anything else for agenda management for us? Okay.
Well, yeah, not a question, or a question, really. You've got a couple of workshops planned, one for, you know, aeration and one for pond standards, et cetera. Are they, they all going to happen on 1/15 or are the workshops going to be sooner than that? Are these workshops ours?
Workshops are ours, are yours. The 1/15, what's the other?
Who is? Parks and Rec again?
Depending on where the Pelican Pond Subcommittee is with their review of the ponds, the proposed pond standard update, I'll wait to see where that's at. If that needs to delay, then we'll have the aeration discussion, but.
Okay, because I'm personally interested in the aeration discussion. I saw we only had 500,000 in that prior proposed spending. Yeah, that, that won't buy you some extension courts when it comes to aeration. Now we're near enough money. All right.
Anything else?
No.
Supervisor comments? Bob?
I'd like to entertain the thought of the board being paid for the participation in the president's meetings when we did that two weeks ago.
You did.
I'm sorry?
You did get paid for that.
Oh, I did?
Yep, you'll see it tomorrow.
I didn't know that. Okay. I thought, I thought we only got paid for these, though.
Nope, you got paid for the one in February, the one in, or the one in.
You can see I watch it closely.
The other January, the one at the end of April, and then the one that you had last week will be on, you'll get that tomorrow.
Thank you.
So Laura, just to jump on Bob's thing, do, we do have two that, either it was a workshop that we didn't get paid, right?
I have two things when I went through to look for opportunities, since some of you may fall a little short, especially with canceling the 18th meeting. There was a groundbreaking ceremony for the admin building back in January that you were not paid for, as well as a continuation of the June 5th board meeting, which was continued to the 12th, that you were not paid for. So that's two meetings that were, you were not, you were not paid for that you could get.
I'll make a motion that we get, get paid for it.
And then there's.
I'm getting in a position that I'm, I haven't missed any, so.
You haven't, yeah.
And then just, I know you made the motion.
So we have a motion and a second, I second the motion.
If I could just chime in.
Sure.
Considering you just canceled the 18th meeting, there could be additional opportunities for you to maximize your costs, and so do you want us to maximize those with workshops or any other meetings that we found?
Like the one we did with the woman that came in and went over goals and responsibility.
That was last year.
Yeah.
That was.
Didn't we do that again this year? Oh, my God, I really loved it.
So the question is, is do we want to have them go ahead and maximize?
Yeah.
Okay. I think you've got that. Go ahead.
So, okay. Did you want to amend your?
I thought I amended the motion to maximize it.
Okay.
Sir, second.
I'll second again the motion.
Would you say, Flavia?
Flavia seconded it.
Okay.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Doug, anything?
No.
Carol?
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we ask Chelsea to write a letter on behalf of the board to Lee County Commissioners, board to board, and ask if there's, based, it appears that there's a new change of philosophy on their part, and would they entertain working with us on the soccer complex?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not going to hurt, they'll probably, they might come back and say no, but it seems to me like the left hand and right hand down there aren't talking. Because they were definitive that they didn't want anything and they weren't going to do anything, and then all of a sudden, they not only did something, the commissioners approved it. So something changed.
Who would you like me to work with to review the letter before I send it on behalf of the board? Or do you want me to have it for your 20th meeting for your review?
We can have it for the 20th meeting.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with Carol reviewing.
I'm going to call Cecil right off the bat anyway to find out what, what's going on. Why, why the two standards? What'd you say, Flavia?
Well, since Carol made the motion, I'm totally fine with Carol, Carol working with Chelsea on the letter on behalf of us and sending that out. I, I personally do not need to stamp the letter, you know, I, I think we are all looking in the same direction. I'm, I'm okay with Carol working with Chelsea and getting that letter out.
What was she saying, you work with you?
I'll draft it, Carol can approve it before I send it.
Okay.
You guys good with that?
Yep.
Okay. I'll give it to you next week.
No.
Okay. Excuse me, I did have one.
I think you have to call.
Yeah. Have we gotten any feelers on those two parcels? The Pelican may or may not be.
I think we need to take a vote.
Oh, I thought we did.
All in favor of having Chelsea and Carol work together on this?
Oh, I thought we already said, yeah, yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Now, the two parcels at Tree Line and Colonial, any bites yet on that?
They, I, I saw, and I showed it to Ed the other day, I saw the ad, I wasn't happy with the aerial picture, so I asked them to go, go, go take a drone and go take a nice picture. I'm waiting for that picture to be updated and then it goes out.
Okay.
So, but I would say bye tomorrow.
I had a couple items. One, we all, I think, received a copy of a document, I don't know what, if it was requested or if it was just submitted into the, to the district, of somebody wanting to purchase. Just a water and wastewater utility. Did you all read that?
I never saw that.
It's in your district email, Bob.
I'll never see it, then.
The issue is, is that, that's got so many ramifications, it's not funny. First of all, we've got and built up a group of employees that I'm sure would be endangered by that, that move. Second of all, is if you want to raise rates, hire somebody that works for profit. Because they're going to add another 15 to 20% to our rates and charges to be able to make money. Or they're going to come in and start cutting services to save money, one or the other. Long story short, when I read it, I thought, no. The utilities that I saw that they represent, which is about 50 or 60 of them, they're on the list, they're all small, what I call mom and pop water and wastewater facilities that probably shouldn't have been in the business to begin with. We were the only one that I could see, just by knowing the area, that were of our magnitude.
Would that mitigate the need for new meters?
What?
No, no, no. Mitigate the need for?
We've already taken out.
All they would do is just basically come in and take over the utility and run the water and wastewater services.
And just so you know, that was honestly, I took it as a compliment that they wanted to buy us, that we must be doing something right. But the second thing is, Tony did send me a statute that we would have to follow in the event that the board would entertain this. There are a laundry list of things lined out, but it's for your consideration.
Soon we have to bid it. Put it out for bids.
Is there additional due diligence that we should be doing as opposed to just saying we're not interested?
I don't believe so.
We might check on it, but I want to bring it up instead of everybody had read it, but I was, did, did this just come out of the clear blue?
Yes.
We didn't invite or anything. Okay. The next one, it probably are for our staff, but I want to make sure that we get it squared away.
In the bigger world, yes, we are a smaller utility.
Some, some issues with the club at Gateway. This last week, and I don't know what precipitated it, but we're getting people coming to our gate demanding to get in to use the country club's pool and the pool facilities. And they say, well, we just got our pass from over at the CDD office. They're not aware, and I talked to you about it, we just need to make sure that when we're passing out those passes, they understand that the pool they get to go to is the commons pool. They don't, in fact, they even thought that they were automatically let in since they're in Gateway, that they get into Gateway Greens, so.
What's wrong with it?
Oh, that was me, I told them to do that.
I haven't told people to write it, but we taught you.
So one thing, Ed, as, as a response to that, and staff brought this up, is we're going to identify our pass cards to say that they are GS CDD or Gateway, not that way, that helps it all identify.
Put our broccoli emblem on it.
Yes, exactly.
Some of these people didn't even understand that there is, Gateway is Gateway, they thought they could go anywhere. Next one.
All one Gateway.
Did you get a?
You could let them into Pelican then, too?
Sure, it's all one Gateway.
Did staff get a letter, or the district get a letter from the club at Gateway on the pond cleaning?
No, uh, what do you mean?
Well, owners that live across from the pond have been told, they can't ask, they're going to have the club do it.
No.
The club is supposed to be drafting a letter, so it hadn't come in yet.
No, it has not.
The other one is.
Wait, 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 back that up a little bit, say that again.
People that live along the ponds that are on the golf course, that live across from the golf course.
Okay.
And the laterals or the other debris that's in the pond, way out in the pond, they can't ask for it to be removed. Staff wants the club to ask for it to be removed. So the club is drafting a letter going through all 15 or 16 of its ponds that have issues of stuff that's, needs to be dimmed out or taken out, that's in the pond. So the club was supposed to be drafting the letter, I thought they had it done.
But don't we already have the requirement of the pond provider to prevent that from ever occurring?
They're not even close to being in compliance.
Okay, so that means we're not monitoring.
The policies that are at the club are not close to compliance with our standards.
There's, this is what we discussed a couple meetings ago, where there's gray area with interpretation, and I understand it was explained what the intent was of the pond policy, that's why the pond standards are coming back.
Okay.
But the, anyone requesting the removal of laterals beyond, we maintain the standard what our pond standard says, the eight-foot bandwidth, eight to 12-foot bandwidth. Anything, if a property owner wants it sprayed out or, you know, removed, they have to make that request. And so that has been told to the club, and the club has to, is identifying those and is making that request.
So it's not a property owner, per se, it would be from the club's point of view.
Yeah.
The next one is, is that if, if you played the golf course, we now have three holes that are essentially not visible from the fairway to the greens. The wetlands, on wetlands 47, 48, and 46, I believe, are, they're over my head. That's how high the, the, the stuff out there is. It's so thick. I, I see guys going in there and they're crazier than hell. They're going to, they're going to come out with a snake on their leg if they don't watch out. But those need to be trimmed bad. What's, what's our deal? Where's our vendor in there for, we've never, since, God, 16 years ago, we've never had a burn in there, a burn of the, the wetlands. And usually, these are trimmed by this time of the year, but nobody's touched it. And they're, they're horrible.
When you're saying wetland, you're not saying conservation area.
Same thing.
Oh, no.
Same thing.
Big difference. It's conservation area, you don't touch it.
These, these are, well, conservation areas, we have trimming and we have burns.
You don't have trimming in conservation areas. You don't do a thing in a conservation area.
I have a question.
Is the one, well, the ones I'm talking about is a wetland. It's wetland 47 and wetland 48 and wetland 46, I believe. But we have trimmed them almost every year.
No.
This year, they have never been trimmed, and they're, you, somebody needs to get in, the, the club can't do it. We've learned the hard way about that. But somebody, our vendor, needs to be getting that done.
I, I will look into it. I don't, I, I don't have enough knowledge and I don't want to misspeak, so.
I can, I can give you some clarity on this. Bob is right. If it is a wetland, there should be no trimming, zero.
Conservation.
Regardless if it's a conservation or a wetland, zero trimming. The only thing that the district does, which is within the district contract, is the vendor must remove all exotics, which means they cut.
All the non-invasive.
Non-invasive and invasive species. So, so that's why, I just want to clarify. So they don't go in and trim it? It looks like they're removing the exotics. They're not even taking it from that location. They'll cut it down, they'll treat it, and they'll leave it there. So if that's, yeah, so if that's not being done.
They have trimmed. Now, they may be trimming evasives.
Well, if they did, it could have been, you know.
But anyway, it's, it's, it's bad, and everybody's asked me, bring it up at the CDD meeting to take a look at it, because it's.
Get them pitching wedges.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so.
Get them pitching wedges.
It's not that he pitching wedges to get over them. They can't see it. That's the problem.
Ed, I think Flavia wanted to finish her comments.
I have a question for Ed. Yeah, no, I just had clarification. So Ed, regarding the golf, the golf course wanting to take care of the laterals, are we talking about the width of the bend that's not being maintained? Because that's part of the contract. That should be taken care of it. Or are they asking for?
Eight to 12-footed.
Yeah, or are they asking for full removal?
Eight to 12-foot's not the issue. These are 30 and feet and more. Out into the pond.
Then the vendor's supposed to do that.
Okay.
Hold on, let me, let me ask this question again. Is the golf course wanting the full removal, meaning zero lateral on the lot that's, that's they own, that there is no requirement? Is that what they want? They want zero laterals on the embankment where they own? Because that's one thing, that's what they need a letter. If what they're asking is just to maintain the width to trim it down to 10 feet, they didn't even need a letter. My expectation is that at the last meeting, when this was brought it up, the staff already had the vendor over there checking this out, because it has been 30 days. So I just need clarification. Okay, if it's the width, they just want the width smaller, or they want a full removal? Because they can have both, as long as it's a silent CEO. So I just need to know what does the, what does the golf course want?
The things we're talking about are beyond what's in the pond standards. I don't have, and neither, neither does the club have any issue on that that's eight to 12 feet, absolutely none. These are, these are laterals, and they are weeds, reeds, whatever you want to call it, that are as much as 30 feet out in the water.
And it's probably the result of dry season, because that's what happened. As the water recedes, the laterals.
Grew up and came back.
They grow, and then they get too far.
The vendor was already out and sprayed the area to confirm that it was within the standards of the contract. But if there's anything in excess of that that the golf course would like, they need to make the request.
Yeah, okay, that's, and that's what they were supposed to be doing, okay. And then the last one is, we're five, have you gotten anywhere with the landscaping on that with Mainscape?
The property owner signed the, the lease.
The release.
That's coming to on the 20th, and we did receive a proposal from Mainscape that we'll be proceeding with. We're trying to time it with the club, and that way it's done in one, one fell swoop.
That's all I had. Anybody have anything else?
Just informationally, we're getting started with our streetlight project in, at FPL in Pelican. It's, it's been staked, and the boring should start next five days or so, so we're moving right along with it.
We're, we're in, trying to get all of our owners to go online. We, we, the HOA have been going to FPL, telling them about streetlights, and they basically give us the same story, 30 to 40 days. We're now having the owners also going to FPL and signing the same deal to see if they.
Yeah, ours are construction, not, not breakage.
Give them some deal, but right now, all of the poles that were put in the new, all appear to have.
The TLN number.
I'm sorry?
The TLN number.
Serial number, so at least now you don't have to say it's the pole between the gazebo and this. It's got a number on it.
What's the issue you're having?
I'm sorry?
What's the issue you're having?
Lights are out.
Lights are out, okay.
Now, good examples, I, the other night, came back from dinner and pulled off at West Links off of Daniel's and went by where they all queue up for the school, all the way up to Gateway Greens, all six of the lights are out.
So just. We're finalizing the punch list. We had given them a punch list. They came out, they made the aesthetic repairs on the poles, the chipped parts, they patched those. They put the TLN numbers. Staff this weekend is going to do a final light inspection, as well as Eric Kohling with FPL. He's going next week and doing a final swoop. And then staff is also going and confirming cosmetic, aesthetic issues are resolved, and then that project is closed out.
Well, they're going around, they've got a guy in a truck, lift truck, and he's got a can of mortar and all of the, that's what it is. It's just basically mortar. They're going to cement. It's not concrete, it's cement. They're going up and all the construction where the.
That looks good.
Grabbed it and they chipped the, the deal. They're making them look real nice. But the two lights that we had, the new ones that they put in, in Gateway Greens that were out, when we called in on those, they got those returned to service pretty quick. But West Links Drive South, boy, that was pitch dark.
And lastly, Chelsea, and this may already be handled, but in our subcommittee meetings, we have people, as we're churning and getting new members, that really don't understand how to themselves input, see, click, fix. And I asked Paul, and I guess I'm just reiterating, that that become an agenda item for the first three subsystems that meet next year. Once for pond, once for, because the people need it. They need to understand this.
That should be a regular social post for us on.
Yeah, so to take the video that we did at the president's council meeting.
That was a great, that was a great one, and just, just disseminate it.
Okay.
Because I keep, I talk to them, well, I don't know, what's that? Okay.
Okay, so since the FPL project in Gateway is almost closed out, almost, how would you classify it? Did it go smoothly? Did it not go smoothly? Would you do it again? What would you do differently?
I don't get a choice. We're doing it again in Pelican.
Well, Pelican's almost already started, but what?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll tell you one thing we learned the hard way, is, is that all their work is underground, basically boring. If you don't know where your assets are located, especially irrigation-type assets, lines get cut. We went to our vendor and had them fix it. Well, our vendor thinks that he's working for us while he is fixing a damage done by FPL. FPL and him weren't talking, and so we ended up with about $12,000.
The bills accumulated.
Bills accumulating that didn't get addressed, and FPL stiffed us.
Well, we're a little bit ahead of that curve, because we did have a meeting this week internally, PPCA, and because it's not an issue at all for Cypress Grove to Prado Pistonia. That's all new. We know where everything is. But for Pelican Reserve Boulevard, we don't know where anything is.
When you have a damage, alls I'm saying is make sure, because keep in mind, you're not dealing with FPL, you're dealing with a sub. So make sure that you keep, keep FPL in the loop of a damage that has to be repaired, and it was done by their, their crew.
If they're looking for something to be down 36 inches by code, and it's at 18 inches and they cut it, that's gonna be a problem.
If yours is like ours, basically anything in Gateway Greens was no asphalt.
It's Pelican Reserve Boulevard.
If you have a 10-foot utility easement, it could be anywhere in that 10 feet, and that's what we ended up having happen.
We have that very same thing.
Anything else?
One more thing, just a reminder that the farmer's market starts tomorrow, so that'll be over here. It'll be across the street. It starts tomorrow, and they'll be every Friday from now through March.
I think positive feedback on it.
Is that well-supported?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we all go there for lunch every Friday, so.
I know the one at the country club one every Wednesday is really well-supported.
We have it every Monday morning.
Their, their products are fantastic.
The vegetables are excellent.
Yep, so that starts tomorrow. They'll be, it's from nine to one.
The tomatoes actually taste like tomatoes.
Taste like tomatoes.
Yeah.
Hot preserves?
Look it up.
All right, thank you.
Or adjourned.[1795.04]